Push your live button again, John, as well. You might have shown up.
I'm sorry.
Your binders are showing up.
I'm gonna have a little black box. You're not. I do shoot if I can.
But I don't think so.
I don't want to watch this.
I don't want to watch this.
The box is white.
Okay. Think so.
The box is nobody's.
Okay. The special meeting of the McHenry County Board is hereby called a order. Madam Court, please call it a.
Kurtz, here. McCann, here. Nowack, here. Green, here. Finer, here. Ballup, present. Smith, here. Sporl, here. Thorson, here. Willock, here. Wilcox, here. Jensen, here. Abing, here. Barnes, here. Bates, here. Christensen, here. Gattamaller, here. Hammerin, Eisler, here. Young, here. Burns, here. Papstel, here.
Thank you, 23 members being present on the floor. We have two items under new business. The release of several confidential state's attorneys' office rulings regarding the lawful hiring of two county employees and a resolution for the county board to fire two lawfully and hire employees. I've been thinking about this, folks.
Hi, Marty. What did you say? I didn't say that.
We are here today because of politics. An election was held 11 months ago, and the people spoke forcefully with the results. Yet a few members of the board refused to put politics aside. It's time to govern. All of our attention and resources should be focused on lowering property taxes, and we shouldn't be playing political games. The facts are simple. County Administrator Pete Austin legally and appropriately hired two staff members to augment the needs of county administration, the chairman's office, and the Division of Transportation. Now, a few members are trying again to do something patently improper and illegal which will subject the taxpayers to huge legal costs. Let's be clear, this manufactured drama didn't have to happen. Ten days after the election last November, the previous county board approved a 2017 budget with no line item for the newly-created countywide office of Chairman of the Board. The voters created a new office with the expectation that whoever is chairman would have the resources to do the job the person was elected to do. This is not the same job as a previous chairman. This chairman is not a voting member of the board unless there's a tie. And this office's powers do not come from the county board. It was created directly by the voters. Any reasonable person understands that a countywide elected office needs employees in order to accomplish the job. The citizens can't be thwarted by this oversight, and the will of the people shall be carried out. Now, I believe that this was a simple mistake without malicious intent. A mistake nonetheless that needed to be rectified, which is what happened. The county staff is in the process of finalizing a 2018 budget that will fix the issue going forward, which includes these two positions and is cost neutral. Now, please understand that we had the opportunity to reclassify these positions as the board did for every other countywide elected official. The individuals calling this special meeting refused to reclassify, and now they complain that the employees weren't reclassifying. So let's talk about the will of the people for a moment. In fact, I think we should invite 100 people who are moving out of McHenry County to a sit-down meeting right here in this room and ask them why they're leaving. And let's see how many of them say, "I put my house up for sale because I can't live on a county where the county administrator legally hired two people who were moved from one line item to another, just like this county's board did for the sheriff, the state's attorney, the recorder, the clerk, and others." I'll save you the suspense. Not one of them will say that. But I'm betting most, if not all, will say that they can no longer afford the property taxes. And that's what I'm focused on, and that's what the sensible board members in this room are focused on. And that's what the Voters' Senate is here to do. And let me repeat the reclassification issue. It was done for every other countywide elected official who requested it, except for those employees assisting the chairman. I have more comments on this, but I want to touch briefly on the legal issues here. I believe it's clear that the county board does not have the right to fire these two employees and that these employees would have an open and shut case for wrongful indiscriminatory firing. Under the county administrative ordinance, it states that the county administrator shall select, employ, supervise, discharge, or remove all personnel, positions, or employment under the jurisdiction of the board, except persons appointed by the board as required by the law of the state. Now, while the county board may have the power to hire and fire personnel, it must do so by amending or repealing the county administrative ordinance. And the ordinance uses the word "shall," vesting the power to discharge or remove personnel solely within his or her authority. If the ordinance contemplated concurring exercises of power, it would have clearly stated so. In its current form, it does not. The ordinance refers to these powers of hiring and firing as applying to all personnel, positions, or employment. Again, it uses the plain language of the ordinance. It is clear that the county administrator is in charge of all employees. So the administrative ordinance is clearly designed to provide for an efficient and well-functioning county by providing for a professional, full-time administrator and staff to manage the day-to-day affairs, including employment matters. And the benefits to taxpayers is clear. And such delegation of tasks is customary for the smooth operation of county governments throughout the state of Illinois. But should the elected officials who make up the McHenry County Board determine that they are better equipped to handle such administrative tasks and that the taxpayers in McHenry County are better served by allowing politicians to intervene in employment decisions, then a change to the county administrator ordinance would first be required. The courts have also recognized a property right in public employment which requires due process, notice, and hearing prior to termination. Failure to provide due process to a terminated employee or failure to assert a legitimate reason for the termination opens up the county to claims of failure to follow due process and discrimination claims. So there's more. I've got a lot more legal stuff, but I will open it up at this time and say rebuttal arguments if necessary.
Yes, before we rebut actually everything the chairman said, I make a motion to move public participation prior to new business as we do with every other public meeting.
Second.
I'd like to work on this and then public participation if we have.
I would not. That was the state of the motion, and it was second.
Any discussion on that?
All those in favor of the gentleman's motion to change the agenda to put the public participation forward?
Aye.
Do you have anyone to sign up?
What are the nays?
Oh, nays, non. Motion carries. There was no one listed on public participation. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Frank? Mr. Frank? May I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you didn't sign up, but come on up.
I didn't realize one of it put out. I beg your pardon.
Necessary equipment to short people. Patricia Kennedy, 20712, Stride Road, rural Harvard. I am surprised to hear dialogue going on, not dialogue, comments by our chair before you actually got into this meeting about the issues at hand. And what came to my mind immediately was if there had been this kind of openness and willing to have dialogue, maybe we wouldn't be in this position to begin with. But just like I said earlier, we need all of you to work together, all of you to work together. And no one's autonomous. And please remember the folks you're representing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Thorson?
Yeah, for some reason. I had. I thought Craig had, again, I thought Craig had the.
He's supposed to.
Okay. You know, I just want to mention, you know, this is the first thing that occurred to me as one of the last things you said was that, do we want to have politicians intervene in the hiring and firing of our employees? And I would stipulate absolutely not. And I would also point out that, in this particular instance, the hiring was definitely involved with a politician, and there is absolutely no doubt about that. So I'd just like to agree with you on that point. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Public participation is over. So now we're on the new business and resolution 3.1. Mr. Willock?
Thank you. Everything you just said, Mr. Chairman, was BS. We did not have an opportunity to have the public informed about what, if anything, the chairman should be doing. Okay, motion? Okay.
Do we have a motion without discussion?
We have a motion. You're right. I'm sorry.
I'll move to.
Motion for discussion on 3.1. Then Mr. Willock, second, and Mr. Frank.
All right. So anyway, we didn't have an opportunity to discuss this with the public because Mr. Frank's boycotted the only legal women voters forum that was scheduled. We did try to have some discussion. We had quite a few lengthy discussions with the Daily Herald, the Northwest Herald, in the endorsement sessions. And so one of the issues that came up was, well, what is the power of the chairman when they're elected by all the voters who set out just by the board? And if you look at the state statute, there really isn't any difference except that the chairman is elected by the entire public, can call for special meetings and doesn't have to. You don't have to go around and circulate the signatures. Nothing else has changed. The reason that other public officials have staffs, there's two reasons. One is it's in the Constitution that they get staffs. They are able to make their own decisions about hiring and firing so long as they stay within the budget set by the county board. And there's legal cases saying that the county board can't interfere with that. That's why we couldn't do anything about some of the hiring decisions that were made by some of the countywide elected officials. The Office of Chairman of the County Board is not included in that. The other reason is that they have staffs is because they generally have some kind of bureaucracy that they're in charge of. Only in very small counties where you have, you know, maybe you may not have a state's attorney who's full-time, might have a prior law practice and does prosecutions, and so he may or may not need a staff. A coroner, some places, you know, very small counties, they may not need a staff. But most places, you know, by the nature of the job, they need a staff. You're a coroner, you need a staff. If you're, you know, the sheriff, you need a staff. This position does not by its very nature necessarily require staff. The previous county board chair has never had staff. What is happening is that the current chairman is trying to expand the nature of the job. And he's doing so without the approval of the county board. I've been on the Internal Services Committee, and we have not been able to even forward rules changes because everything gets stymied. And so what's happening here is an attempt to seize power. That's what's been going on all year. It's a power grab. It's trying to take power that no chairman has had before and is not authorized by state law and that the public has not said they want to have. And so with respect to these two hires, what they are being used for is the self-aggrandizement of the county board chairman. That's their purpose. It's very interesting that since the beginning of the year, there's been virtually no coverage by the newspaper of record in this county of the disagreements that the county boards had with the chairman. The only thing we've seen are articles that look like they were press releases from the chairman's office. And then we go and hire the reporter who was supposed to have been covering the county board during that time. And so it comes down to, you have two journalists in it. I question the journalistic ethics that are involved in that. So we should not have, at county expense, at government expense, at public expense, people being paid to tout the chairman. And that's what has been going on. And I'm not saying this because of sour grapes, and I get accused every time I try to say anything. Of sour grapes because I lost the election. If Mr. Gattamaller had beat me in the primary and he'd lost the election, I'd be saying exactly the same things. People who know me on the board know that I have a reputation for believing that the chairman of the board, no matter who it is, even if it had been me, should not have a whole lot of power, that there should be a board-run county. And our rules provide that we are a board-run county. This is a state office that should be cooperative, and the chairman should be a facilitator, not a dictator. And that's, I think, covers it. Thank you.
Mr. Willock? I'm not going to respond to what you said about me, because you can say whatever you want. But I do take great umbrage that you question the integrity of Mr. Craver, and he can't respond. I just think it was way out of line, and I wanted you to know that. Mr. Willeck?
Both of these items today for this special meeting are, I consider, difficult issues. They stem from, as I said in the previous county meeting communication. If we take a look at the genesis of this problem, or this issue specifically, last year, part of me being on this board, the Finance Committee did not create a budget for the chairman's office. The can was for the kick to when we were sworn in in December. Mr. Austin made the decision to create and fill these two positions. Again, another communication issue, which brings us to why we're here today. We have tried to fix this, and the Human Resources Committee got stymied there. Precedent is key here, and I don't want to set a precedent. I want to correct that precedent, which was second. However, the consequences of this action, I do not want the county residents to incur any legal fees. And there's going to be a fight, guys. Okay? So once again, I call for a reprimand to the county administrator for getting us into this position today, which I feel unjustly placed. And I mean not to be the only person who feels that way, but it's difficult, and the can has been kicked far enough. And let's get this thing over with, and let's do some work for the people of the county.
Mr. Willeck?
I agree with the chairman. This is not about Kevin nor about the duties he performed prior to being employed at the county or duties he performs now. In fact, this has nothing to do with Kevin at all. This goes back to December, and it goes back to our policies and our processes. Mr. Willeck stated it nicely, that we were stymied. Let's be honest, special meeting requests were ignored by committee chairman, duties were willfully unattended to by the administrator, and the chairman is claimed by many to have exerted influence that the state's attorney says he does not have. If you read the revised Northwest Herald article today, the chairman, and in his own remarks, believes he's the equivalent of other countywide elected officials. He is not. Mr. Willock explained that. He's not a constitutional elected official. He does not have authorities beyond what were offered in Illinois statute and what this county board gives him. And we do not give him and have not given him hiring authority. Mr. Willeck, you said reprimand the administrator. But if you remember during the HR meetings, the administrator only facilitated. He's on record as saying he did not do the hiring. He did not want to get in the way of the duties of the elected official. Even he had been misled as to the authorities of elected-at-large chairman. We have state's attorney opinions that validate this. We have individual research of Illinois statute that validate this. So don't let the chairman mislead you in thinking he's the same as the sheriff or the state's attorney or any other countywide elected official. He claims during the vote that the voters approved greater powers, greater resources. You did not. You simply approved that you didn't want the members of this board possibly playing quid pro quo for committee chairmanships to approve one of their own members to be the board chair. You said you wanted no perception of impropriety amongst this governing body. You wanted the ability to elect the chairman-at-large, and that's all we did. We elected the chairman-at-large purely to increase transparency and openness in government, and we got exactly the opposite after our new chairman was sworn in. He claims all other elected officials were given what they asked for. The chairman could have asked to have this result. He mentioned the reclassification resolution that came forward. He had all authority to put that on any county board agenda since it went through committees. He chose not to. He did not ask. That reclassification resolution could have resolved this issue months ago. And since he did not, the members of the Human Resources Committee, as I explained Wednesday the 23rd, and I will not go through the history here, but I will make it available to everyone, the members of this board have attempted, under every county board process, to bring this to light and to simply do one thing. Chairman mischaracterizes the county administrator's duties. So I'll read straight from the county administrator ordinance. Under Section 10, Staff, "The county administrator may employ staff to assist in the performance of these powers and duties upon authorization of the McHenry County Board." That is what this is about. This board, these elected officials in front of you, have never been given the opportunity to perform their duty, their responsibility, which is to give that authorization. Now, today, if you support this resolution, it does not fighter anyone the way the chairman liberally takes editorial comment. Let's see. His statement in the special meeting notice to terminate lawful county hires. Let's just read straight from the resolution. "Is to authorize the elimination of positions from the county board-approved departmental roster." There's no request to fire any individuals. This is doing the county board's duty for budgetary and departmental roster responsibilities. The reality is, this is a vote that's been long overdue, and it is simply this. If you support this resolution, you support that the processes that we have put in place to govern ourselves, we will hold ourselves accountable to them. If we are going to govern the residents of this county, we need to have their utmost trust and respect that we can govern ourselves first. And we have not been doing that. If you vote against this resolution, it's simple. You're giving consent to the establishment of authorities that do not exist. You're giving consent and condone the ability to go outside of our processes for what the administrator deemed unique situations, that is why processes exist, to exactly get the elected official input on processes that are unique. This entire aspect is about transparency and openness. And you can support this resolution and then turn around and support the proper process which is being going through for the budget for 2018. That's the simple aspect of this resolution and this request. Thank you.
Mr. Willeck? You indicated this is not about firing employees. That's exactly what this is. This is inappropriate and illegal, and it puts the county government and the taxpayers in McHenry County at risk of significant liability for a potential claim of retaliatory discharge by the fired employees. And the courts aren't going to be fooled by the pretext that this is being asserted for laying off these particular employees and normal the taxpayers. We all know what they're being targeted. We heard my friend talk about the election last year. I ask that you let it go. Really, it's time to govern. Just let it go. We need to move forward. And case law is clear on this. There's extensive research on this. I'm not going to bore you with the sites, but I've got about six cases here indicating what our liability would be. So let's not pretend that this isn't firing folks, because that's exactly what it is. Mr. Finer?
This is definitely a situation where no perfect solution is going to be made in either way than what we decide. Obviously, Mr. Austin took some procedural flexibilities that raised everybody's eyebrows. However, on the other hand, this resolution leaves serious concerns over me about the legal issues and the problems that we're going to put this county board in. In the last two years, we were sued twice because of quick decisions, and I think that this is just a little rash right now. I don't think it's not necessary, but I think it's a little rash if we were just to go and approve this resolution. In fact, if I didn't have my state's attorney's assurance that we would not be put under a lawsuit, there's no way I would approve this resolution today. And we don't have it. Every time we make a decision on principle or parliamentary moves that gets us in trouble, I think we've made mistakes. There are ways of fixing it. Personally, I would just assume fix this thing on the budget and have it there. But is that the easy way to? Maybe we should be gone to committee to define their roles and approve it and make sure if there is a budget for you, Jack, we give you one.
You're right. It's actually.
But I cannot, in my full heart of hearts, say, "Let's sign it. Let's go." Because without our state's attorney telling me, "Yeah, this is right to do it this way", not all the tea in China is going to persuade me either way to make a decision.
Mr. Thorson?
Everybody here should know that the legal representation of the county board is the state's attorney's office. So I would recommend that if we're going to be bandying about legal opinion in this meeting, that we have the state's attorney involved in it. They're the ones who represent us. Number two, quick, rash, those are words I've heard. I hate to say this, but this has been in front of us since the beginning of 2017. There is nothing quick or rash about what we're discussing today. It's already been mentioned that we, as a board, are entitled to responsibilities. We are elected to carry out responsibilities. And if this board decides to pass those responsibilities on to a surrogate, that is up to this board. That is within the realm of possibility and power of this board. I'm very satisfied right now, simply because we're having this discussion, and the board is going to make a decision. I may not agree with the decision that the board makes, but I'm happy that we have taken that initiative back into our hands. Thank you.
So Willeck, you've spoken three times. We'll give you one more chance.
Well, that's okay, because I'm not sure. Our county board rules limit the number of times I can speak. And the first was simply to address the agenda that you failed to put in properly. So the reality is, John, you have the state's attorney view. August 8, 2017 completely agrees that this resolution is illegal and revalidates the authority of the board to do this. Now, what they can't give you is any sense of whether we may or may not be sued. I'm guessing that I'm hearing that the chairman will lead a fight to sue us if we do this. That's okay. Sometimes issues must go to court to be resolved, especially when they deal. trust and respect that we can govern ourselves first, and we have not been doing that. If you vote against this resolution, it's simple: You're giving consent to the establishment of authorities that do not exist. You're giving consent and condone the ability to go outside of our processes for what the administrator deemed unique situations, and is why processes exist, to exactly get the elected official input on processes that are unique. This entire aspect is about transparency and openness. And you can support this resolution and then turn around and support the proper process which is being going through for the budget for 2018. That's the simple aspect of this resolution and this request. Thank you.
Mr. Wilcox, you indicated this is not about firing employees. That's exactly what this is. This is inappropriate and illegal, and it puts the county government and the taxpayers in McHenry County at risk of significant liability for a potential claim of retaliatory discharge by the fired employees. And the courts aren't going to be fooled by the pretext that this is being asserted for laying off these particular employees and normal the taxpayers. We all know what they're being targeted. We heard my friend talk about the election last year. I ask that you let it go. Really, it's time to govern. Just let it go. We need to move forward. And case law is clear on this. There's extensive research on this. I'm not going to bore you with the sites, but I've got about six cases here indicating what our liability would be. So let's not pretend that this isn't firing folks, because that's exactly what it is. Mr. Ryder?
This is definitely a situation where no perfect solution is going to be made in either way than what we decide. Obviously, Mr. Austin took some procedural flexibilities that raised everybody's eyebrows. However, on the other hand, this resolution leaves serious concerns over me about the legal issues and the problems that we're going to put this county board in. In the last two years, we were sued twice because of quick decisions, and I think that this is just a little rash right now. I don't think it's not necessary, but I think it's a little rash if we were just to go and approve this resolution. In fact, if I didn't have my state's attorneys of assurance that we would not be put under a lawsuit, there's no way I would approve this resolution today, and we don't have Every time we make a decision on principle or parliamentary moves that gets us in trouble, I think we've made mistakes. There are ways of fixing it. Personally, I would just assume fix this thing on the budget and have it there, but is that the easy way too? Maybe we should be gone to committee to define their roles and approve it and ensure if there is a budget for you, Jack, we give you one.
You read that. It's actually a big...
But I cannot in my full heart of hearts say, "Let's sign it, let's go," because without our state's attorney telling me, "Yeah, this is right to do it this way," not all the tea in China is going to persuade me either way to make a decision.
Mr. Person?
Everybody here should know that the legal representation of the county board is the state's attorney's office, so I would recommend that if we're going to be banding about legal opinion in this meeting, that we have the state's attorney involved in it. They're the ones who represent us. Number two: Quick, rash, those are words I've heard. I hate to say this, but this has been in front of us since the beginning of 2017. There is nothing quick or rash about what we're discussing today. It's already been mentioned that we, as a board, are entitled to responsibilities. We are elected to carry out responsibilities, and if this board decides to pass those responsibilities on to a surrogate, that is up to this board. That is within the realm of possibility and power of this board. I'm very satisfied right now, simply because we're having this discussion, and the board is going to make a decision. I may not agree with the decision that the board makes, but I'm happy that we have taken that initiative back into our hands. Thank you.
So Wilcox, you've spoken three times. We'll give you one more chance.
Well, that's okay, because I'm not sure our county board rules limit the number of times I can speak, and the first was simply to address the agenda that you failed to put in properly. So the reality is, John, you have the state's attorney view. August 8th, 2017 completely agrees that this resolution is illegal and revalidates the authority of the board to do this. Now, what they can't give you is any sense of whether we may or may not be sued. I'm guessing that I'm hearing that the chairman will lead a fight to sue us if we do this. That's okay. Sometimes issues must go to court to be resolved, especially when they deal with the Illinois State Constitution and the powers of duly elected officials. So you have that. I'm sure you've read it. I hope you've read it. But the reality is, they are on our side as our legal defense that says this is legal, and we have the authority to do this. And to ensure I don't speak again, I'll call for the...
That isn't true at all, what he said.
Don't second that.
Is that true at all?
Thank you, Chairman. If there wasn't a second for calling the question, then I will speak. I don't want to, you know, okay, good. All right. All right, Craig. For once, something I don't agree with you on, and that was calling the question. So just because I want to say something. Yeah, you know, I've been around the block here a few times, and every time I have been in a situation what I would characterize as truth to power, and that means standing up and saying, "No, I'm not going along with what you want me to do." Every time I have been threatened with a lawsuit, as a county board member, I have been threatened with a lawsuit, and I've always been smart enough to say, "It's not about the lawsuit. It's not about me being afraid or fearful. It's about doing what I am legally required to do and my own principles, ethics, and values." So here we are, being threatened prematurely with a lawsuit. Gee, I've been here before. And that is not how we make decisions as people that are driven by our principles and our values and our commitments to serve. We have to go through the process of our responsibilities. Colonel Wilcox articulated the legal aspects of this very well. I want to just supplement that with an anecdotal perspective, and that is that I found out about these hires in January, and a number of people know about how incredulous I was at that time. Very few people knew about it in January. We then proceeded to try and get information, and we proceeded to try and open up this conversation so that there could be an assessment of the appropriateness of this. And we were stopped by meetings, Mr. Austin, not being called, and by the chairman. It appears to have undermined the process. This is not the way a democratic governing operation works. This is more in line of countries that don't have constitutions, that don't have true representation. That is not McHenry County. And so my point in all of this is, I think that we need to vote yes today on this resolution, but I also think that we need to be ready to allow the chairman the opportunity to do what's always been done, and that is talk to the HR community, excuse me, the HR committee, and walk through that process, explaining why that position is needed and how that position will be filled. Personally, I don't think picking select people is appropriate. Again, this is a taxpayer-funded operation. I don't think you pick the people you want. Rather, you open it up to the committee or to the public and let the public have an opportunity to apply for the job. That wasn't done here. So, you know, I welcome the chairman to justify these positions. I welcome the chairman to walk through the procedures that every elected official has gone through, as I've been a county board member, and then we can effectively grade the position, should it be accepted, and make the appropriate decisions. But we have to follow this process. If we don't, we'll soon find the ranks of our employees not being justified and accounted for, and it will be tremendously problematic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You do know this is, we just talked about it, fixing it going forward in the budget, and it was a problem to be fixed, but you seem to think that elected officials are not allowed to hire their own staff?
No, that is not true.
Well, they are.
I just explained the process in which elected officials go through committee, and they establish the rationale and the type of skill sets, et cetera. And then the HR committee puts that forth to other committees as well. That is how staffing is done, and that's how we have been able to control the most expensive resource in this county, and that is staffing. We have a professional, oh, that's okay. We have a professional process that we follow.
I don't think that's accurate. I think the folks that are raising the stake didn't do that when the newly former, the elected Republican chairman, I'm sorry, the Republican sheriff hired the chairwoman of the Republican Party for a six-figure salary and gave her a $950 annual clothing allowance, despite the fact that she's a civilian employee who doesn't carry a gun or wear a badge or a uniform. I don't think that was done. I don't think the same people kept silent when his campaign manager was named deputy chief of patrol despite a background that included punching two women in the face and dragging a third through the parking lot by the hair. So let's not say that that's done, because for elected officials, they're able to hire.
Yes, so I've heard, sure, go ahead, point of order.
No, go ahead.
If you have a point of order, it takes precedent over what I have on the floor. If you have a point of order, go ahead.
No, I don't agree.
Okay. So I've heard several things today, and I've heard several things over the last month, the last few months over this issue. And I've heard on one hand that this isn't about hiring or firing. This is about how we're going to do our process. And I know that the chairman, and this is one place I do disagree with him on, has made it very difficult for us to weigh in on this, and that's what's happened at this point. However, I'm also hearing that this isn't about firing two people that are working for us in this county right now, today. So I think the way to actually correct this is to turn this on its head, and I'm making the following motion: Resolution authorizing the creation of positions, but instead of those numbers, they would be the positions we're going to create in the next budget, 70001, regular salaries, new position communications specialist, and also position 70001, regular salaries, executive assistant to the board. It creates the positions and lets them be filled with the people that are here, and this board has then had the opportunity to weigh in on them or not. As far as the now-there-fours in those paragraphs, where it's the first now-there-for and then the first be resolved in place of the word terminate, I would put in the word include. And again, on those lower numbers, I would change them to reference the OCA county chairman. If you look at the thing that we passed out at the last meeting with our supplementals, it's the first two lines.
Is that a motion you're making?
That is a motion, and I'm making it now.
Now I do have a point of order. Second it.
Second it. I'm sorry, Mr. Person, what's your point of order?
Well, is that something we published, or is that something that...
Yes, it is.
Yes. Well, it's an amendment.
It's not. It's reversing what you're calling for, but it is an amendment.
The discussion on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Person, did you want to say anything?
No, actually, he sent it for me, and if you look at your supplementals, it's right there. It's right on that page. Thank you. Right in the very top, the one he's talking about. Thank you.
Mr. Person?
Time wise, I'm just a little bit upset with the amendment, because I didn't have the opportunity to speak prior to the amendment on my comments that may have led people, given people more information about the other item that we had, so I'm a little disappointed about that. So speaking to this amendment only, I will be voting no to it for the simple fact that I just, you know, if you want to hold on to it and let the discussion continue on the other items, that's fine. You know, in the past, we've had county board members complain about amendments that are on the floor that are so significant that none of us have anything to read, none of us have anything to look at, none of us, you know, in this particular case, you're talking about creating new jobs with no job descriptions in front of us, which I think is a little irresponsible. Our internal support committee for months has been trying to get the agenda item of these positions on the agenda as newly created positions, and we have not been allowed to do so. I'm not going to say anything that I have not said publicly before or in a conversation with you over the phone. You know, I would have voted no, I would have voted yes to eliminate the positions because our policies and our procedures require that we do that when a position has been vacant for 90 days. Staff was supposed to eliminate the positions, and for some reason, they didn't. We're not talking about people. We're not talking about firing people. We're talking about positions. Eliminating the positions, and the ISF committee majority has always believed that if these positions that we're talking about, the people have positions that are created, that's fine. If the chairman has a budget, that's fine. But I don't agree that elected officials can be all put in the same category of their authorities. The difference here is that these positions were never assigned to the chairman's budget. And that's the big procedural problem that I have, and that's the problem that I've had as chairperson of Internal Support and Facilities for months now, is that we have been asked over and over again to do things that don't follow the county's written procedures. And we're repeatedly put in that position, you know, every single meeting we have, and there are five of us who have stood firm on saying, "We're not going to fall into that trap. We're not going to do something that we don't believe is right, because whoever it is wants us to do that." So all along, you know, my opinion and the opinion of many of the county board members has been, if we eliminate these positions and we go through the proper procedure of recreating positions that are realistic, you know, then we don't have a problem. Nobody is hurt. Everybody has the resources they need. Everybody is in a position to do, you know, the work that they need to do. So I think it's wrong to accuse people of political motivation, because, Jack, you of all people should know, I have never done anything politically motivated to you over all of these months. I have no intention of doing it. It's just not my way. So I don't like it when I am accused and my committee is accused of doing things that we're not doing. We have stated over and over again, we want to follow the procedures. For the people who believe that the way to solve this is to put it into the budget, that's not the procedure we use. You know, I'm not saying it can't go into the budget. I'm saying, let's do it the way that we have written down. Procedures and policies are put in place for reasons. Some of those reasons are to protect the public. Some of those reasons are to protect the employees, you know, and there's no reason not to follow the proper procedures. I've never understood the resistance in doing things the right way, and this whole thing for nine, 10 months has been blown up into a big problem, and it could have been fixed very, very simply. But I think it is important that the public knows and the county board members all know, every single month, the Internal Support and Facilities Committee is put in a position of being asked to do something that don't follow policies, and there's just no reason for it. If we do it and follow the policies, then we can get more work accomplished the right At county board, you know, since I first started, I've heard all sorts of the threat of lawsuits over and over again, and I tell people that, you know, we can't stop anybody from suing us for any reason whatsoever. It's part of doing business, but it's not going to change my decision-making, because, again, anybody can do it at any time. There's always someone who is willing to get involved in that process. So I'm honestly not going to support this amendment, because I think the correct way of doing things is well documented. It's well written down. Anybody, whether it's a department head or an elected official, brings those job descriptions through the liaison committee and the Human Resources Committee and the Finance Committee to make sure that the money is there. Those procedures guarantee that there is no funny business anywhere, that people aren't doing things that are inappropriate. And to this day, no one has been able to explain to me why it's a good idea now to throw all those procedures and policies out the window. You know, if somebody gave me a good reason for doing that, I'd be happy to listen to it and ponder it, but I've never heard a response to that. Why should we do something different here? You know, except maybe we'll all elected officials do it. But the elected officials who do reclassify, who do hire their personnel, who do make those staffing decisions, have people assigned to their department. You know, when the newly created position came in for the chairman, there probably should have been a budget created, and there wasn't, and the county board should have been involved in that. The county board should have been made aware of that problem, and they should have addressed it at the time. That didn't happen. That didn't happen, so then staff started making decisions to deal with the problem without any input from the county board. I think had we dealt with this nine or 10 months ago, you know, you would have had your budget. Personnel would have been squared away, and we wouldn't be having this meeting today. So, you know, I stand behind doing things the proper way. It has, my yes votes, my no votes have no emotional reasons attached to them. It's based on what's written down and the logic of it. And I just want to make that point clear, because you accused me as part of the group of doing things for political motivation, and that's just not true. When you make comments like that, you plant seeds in people's eyes, ears, and all over the place, and it's just not appropriate for me.
I apologize. I didn't mean to include you, but I saw some political ramism kind of manipulation.
And that may be true for some people, but I don't think it's fair to generalize...
You were included.
As a group. I don't think it's fair to generalize as a group, but when you do, the group needs to know, you know, there's more going on here than eight or 10 people who requested a special meeting. There's a committee of seven who every single month is asked by staff to do things that do not follow procedure and policy. And I encourage everybody to listen to those meetings, to look at the agendas, and understand that you can't just come in here and make up new policies as you come along. Gee, let's create the jobs this way, even though we've never done it before. You just shouldn't be doing that. If you do it in this case, then you're going to do it next month for something else, and the month after that for something else, and it's just a real bad idea, although it may sound good, let's do it through the budget. That's fine, but to get to the budget part, you have to have the positions created. And the problem with these positions right here today are, they are written for a job description that is not being completed. That's my only problem. It should have been taken off, it wasn't, so let's get rid of it and let's move on to looking at new job descriptions if we need them.
First of all, I apologize. I didn't mean to paint you in that rush, but I thought, I mean, we heard some comments that were certainly political. We'll put that aside. This was, nobody likes the position we're in. It's awful. It was a mistake. I said I'm not going to do this. I believe it was trying to be rectified and trying to do it through the budget process, obviously, and Pete has the ability, and that's what we've given him in the prior boards, the ability to hire and fire, and he was in a tough position, quite frankly, and he fixed it. I know he did try to reclassify, and I know he doesn't want to talk, but I'm going to call on him on something, because, and we talked about the resolution, and I mean, there's some factual inaccuracies, because I think, well, I'll let him say, because then we talked about the requirement of having to get rid of something that's unfulfilled in 90 days, and I'm sure that's not correct at all, and we believe that he did follow the resolution by his own conscience, and we're going to go forward and fix it. This is a nightmare for everyone. It really is. We should never have been here, and frankly, two months from now, it will be fixed with the budget, and I think that's appropriate, but I'm going to call on Pete to say a few things.
I apologize, Chairman. I'm not sure which point you'd like me to make. I will admit, if you call this a nightmare, it's... And my 25-year professional career has been the toughest thing I've dealt with, and I would remain as a doctor's advocate. You referred to the vacancies.
Yeah.
You know, we've had this discussion up and on, and there's reference to vacancies needing to be unfilled, or to be removed from the roster at 90 days. There was a period in this county's history when there were a lot of positions put on the roster that were never filled, principally by elected officials, but by other social workers, and even prior to my arrival, those efforts put in place to make that happen so the board would control the roster. But if you, if you are a hypothetical elected official and you have positions on your rosters that you're not going to fill, that gives you money, and it gives you the flexibility to fill them down the line, or use money, or use dollars in other ways. When I got here... When I got here, working with, we're often, and past HR committees and past boards, we've really done a good job of controlling the roster, the county board controlling the roster to play C-1s, all these resolutions coming forward, making these adjustments. And one of the controls has been, you know, not letting people park vacant positions indefinitely. We clean that up and that doesn't happen anymore. Are there, are there positions right now on the county roster that have been vacant for 90 days? Yes. Yes, there are. And I know a lot of those because I have dialogues with the department heads and elected officials about what's going on with those positions and why are we leaving them out there. And it's just that simple. The county board has empowered myself and the HR director, my position as the HR director, kind of obligated these and make a decision as to whether or not we're going to keep them on the roster. But we have, we have the ability to clean them off the roster if we don't think that they're being actively trying to be filled or if there's some other reason. You know, we wanted to have some position on the roster right now that she's keeping open because she's not quite sure what kind of resources she's going to need when financial software comes in, financial position, financial software comes in to be. We've had that conversation. I'm comfortable with it. It's past 90 days. So it's that simple math there. We're just asking our department heads to, if you're going to keep a position open for the 90 days, let us know what's going on.
Why don't we just read from the salary administration policy?
Mr. Smith? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, obviously, this is a situation where I sort of feel like the train has fallen off the tracks here a little bit. We want to follow the process, but it seems to me the original resolution is bypassing some of the processes too. So I would like to make an amendment to amend the amendment, that we would amend this resolution with the language that Mr. Gattamaller has and then send it back to committee for consideration as amended.
Which committee?
I would, I would be glad to, what committee should we be the proper ones to go to? Internal support? Finance? HR? They could go to all three of them. It should go to all three of them. And please, that would be my language.
A second by Mr. Gattamaller. Thank you, Larry. That's a clerk cast. I want to make sure we have the right language and that makes a lot of sense. So it would go to three committees?
Yes.
The ISF, HR, as well as finance?
And then finance at the end, yes.
Okay. So it would be amendment to Mr. Gattamaller's amendment.
I, you know, I will let the procedural people tell me that exactly, but that's the way I would understand an amendment to the amendment. So we'd be using Mr. Gattamaller's language and adding that it goes back to the three committees.
Joe? I think you would just, you would send the whole thing back to the committees. I don't think you need to vote on the amendment, on my amendment. I think you just send the three back to the committees.
Unless you amend yours and just send it back to the committee for.
Okay. I would accept his amendment. That's fine. But I, I don't have a problem with the amendment. I just thought you, it's going to all get debated at those meetings anyway. Whichever, whichever way you form it, it doesn't matter to me.
Correct.
Then explain.
So there's a motion and a statement on amending the amendment.
Joe's accepting the amendment.
He's accepting the amendment. Are you okay with the amendment?
I am.
Okay. So why don't we vote on the amendment now?
No, they're still discussing.
Okay. Mr. Reiner?
Oh, Mr. Reiner. Mr. Chairman, I've had my light on for the entire discussion and you avoided the color for the entire time.
I apologize. Mr. Reiner, we recognize that, I didn't see it.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner.
So, Mr. Reiner?
You should have put Mr. White in your picture, Joe.
Mr. Reiner, please proceed.
I wanted to thank you, Ben, for her comments because I couldn't agree with her more. The procedure to take this to committee because the original, or even today's amendment, I would not have voted on. I think this is getting back on track and this does make the most sense. As for being threatened by a lawsuit, my, this isn't why I made this decision because if you've known me through my life, my business or my personal life, even the political life, I don't take the threats. I dig it and I would have done it. But my business sense and my experience tells me that for the county and the taxpayers to accept a lawsuit would be foolish because it would have crossed this warning. But I am glad that through this discussion, we worked out a good resolution.
Mr. Reiner, I apologize. I didn't mean to break you.
All right. We're here talking about positions. We're talking about lawsuits and we're talking about authority. There's only one state's attorney in this county. It's not Mr. Reiner. Gattamaller, it's not Mr. Franks, it's not me, it's not Mr. Walker, it's not Michelle. It's our state's attorney. And to encapsulate the opinion as I read it, the buck stops here. It stops with all of us. We are the county board members, not Mr. Franks. The county board members are the ultimate authority in terms of hiring and firing of any employee that works here in the county. We have that authority. That has been ordained and that has been codified in our ordinances. So for us to basically say, oh, I'm afraid we might get sued. You know what? We might get sued if we keep this ordinance because you know what? We have people filling positions that are not doing their job descriptions. So there's plenty of people out here that can say, you know what? What's that utility coordinator doing? Oh, she's helping out Jack Franks. Or what's this person, the person doing, well, hiring them, doing political work on county time. Well, that's not something that's exactly kosher, folks. That's something that can, somebody can sue us for. And our administration put us in this position. So what I would propose is that we go back to the main motion, terminate those positions and then take the reign and then go over the chairman's budget in the proper fashion as is legally established, established by past president. Now, I know that, you know, our chairman has spent a lot of time in the state of Illinois and they do things a certain way and they get certain results. But we're here in McHenry County. We have a AAA rating, bond rating. That's because we follow rules. We don't make up the rules as we go along the way. What we do is follow the rule of law so that every citizen feels that they've had a fair chance. Now, we have a procedure with, with our hiring. When a position becomes vacant or when a position is going to be filled, each and every employee in this building has an opportunity to apply for that position. It's called posting. Mr. Austin did not follow that procedure. Through the dark of night, during Christmas holidays, he hired two people. Whether or not he says he did it or he says the chairman did it, they're both playing fourteen against each other. We can't have that. We need to stop it now, correct it and act like adults that we are and move on. Thank you.
Mr. Christensen?
Thank you, Chairman. This reminds me of when I was 12 years old watching my parents fight and we just lost the house. It's like we come here, we get, it's just such an argument. For practical purposes, the McHenry County Board has, has one employee and that's the county administrator. And this goes to Tom Willbeck's point. Pete has acknowledged that he didn't follow protocol and really started this train that now is before us today. And it was his error. Now, when he hired the two employees, this error will be fixed by the next budget process. So, but I don't want to see the board do is compound this error by starting to be the board that now hires and fires people. I think that's getting to a level of micromanagement that sometimes is what this board does to me too often. In my opinion, this is a partisan fight that is wrapped up into a protocol battle that leads to nowhere. Again, that's my opinion. Furthermore, you know, my, my personal loyalty is always to the taxpayers of McHenry County. And I think that this, I know people, you can dismiss it, but this will undoubtedly lead to lawsuits. It could lead to lawsuits anyway, but you know, as we see in Algonquin Township that has spent, I don't know, $200,000 in legal battles in other areas of the county, it is time that this board stop the rancor and the arguments where we get nothing done all day long and start to govern. So I hope that this goes back to committee and supports the resolutions that have been presented by Joe and Larry or just move on. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you. I first of all, I want to apologize publicly to Mr. Craver. That was, I was overwhelmed. I'm very sorry. You've always been, your articles and journalistic standards were always of the highest order. And I'm sincerely sorry I said that. I hope you accept that. I do think that Mr. Smith's motion is, takes us to where we should have been all along. And so I'm going to support that, going back to committee idea. That's what we should have been doing from day one. And again, I think the subtext of this whole thing and the subtext of everything that's been happening, and this is not about sour grapes, about the election, I'm sorry, but the subtext of everything is that Mr. Franks feels that the office of directly elected county board chairman should be something other than what it has historically been. I think there is a good argument that that should perhaps be the case. But the way that we do that is to go through the committee processes at the board and have discussions about, okay, now we've got a directly elected county board chairman, do we want the office to change? And what do we want the office to do? We tried to have those discussions in the internal support committee and we were stymied because we couldn't get them on the agenda. You know, I think, I think what we need to do is recognize that everything here that's going on revolves around that intent. And it's not a bad idea. I'm not saying the county board chairman shouldn't have more power because he's directly elected, but it needs to go through, it needs to be a board decision and not something that somebody could crook. And that's what's been very frustrating, is that we, we can't get our act together in terms of our normal procedures because we keep getting roadlocked. So if we want to have that discussion, I would really, really welcome it. But it needs to take place in the internal support committee in connection with rules changes. And then we need to take the rules changes to the full board and have the full board discuss, should we have a different type of office here because it's being properly elected? And if we do, should there be a support, additional administrative support for it? That's a very legitimate discussion. But we have not had that discussion and the voters did not authorize that. It was not part of the referendum. People like to claim that things, voters' decisions do things that they think voters should have done, but you know, there was not anything in the referendum to allow the directly elected chairman, and I was part of the effort to put that on the ballot, that said the chairman gets more power because he's directly elected. And to continually are mishmashing the terms elected official. There are certain officials that are created by our state constitution. Those are the elected officials. When we talk about elected officials, that's who we're talking about. Talking about sheriff, state's attorney, coroner, clerk of the court, et cetera. There's a list. County board chairman is not on the list. It's not an elected official in that sense. None of that, none of that applies to it. It's something that the board needs to decide, should we be changing the position because it's now directly elected? I welcome that discussion. I wish we could have had it. We should have been starting it last December or last January and we haven't been able to get it off the ground. So let's have that discussion. I think that returning this to committee gives us an opportunity to have that discussion. I mean, the chairman should have some more support, but we need to decide that and not have it decided, you know, at Christmas Eve when we're all doing other things. Against the chairman, I'm very, very sorry. And, you know, that's all I can say about that right now.
Pushing this back to committee puts us right back to the position that got us here. I'm accepting of Mr. Gattamaller's amendment to vote on this tonight. This is our responsibility. Sending it to committee will push us longer than the budget process itself. So that's an application of our responsibility. Let's be the governed officials that we were elected to be. Let's accept Mr. Gattamaller's amendment and let's have a vote tonight and resolve this issue once and for all. And if the amendment passes, the positions are there and it's done. We don't need to go back to three other committees, committees whose chairman have precluded this from happening in the past. Let's do this tonight. That's our responsibility. It's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things. I think a lot of it's been covered. Almost all things that we vote on are budgetary, one way or another, except for maybe some zoning things in that nature, but everything that we do is budgetary in the way we do and run the county. The processes that are both on HR and internal support, and we have been asking for this pretty much since day one as far as the committees have been formed and things in that nature. And I also take question as far as political motivation. I don't do any political motivation whatsoever. Absolutely none. Everything that I vote on is because I think it's in the best interest of the county. I do my homework and I make my vote and I stick by it. I also would like to make an amendment to the amendment. That these will go through the committee and that it will be on our October agenda. That's what I would like to make the amendment for, is that if it goes through committees, that this will be on the agenda for October.
The agenda for the county board meeting?
The agenda for the county board meeting, yes. Thank you.
Do we have special meetings for the committees?
Everybody has a meeting before that, I don't think.
We have special meetings.
Then we have to have a special meeting, one way or another.
Is there a meeting for the committees?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, Michael. I'm sorry. Wait one second. So if we have to have, if committees have to have a special meeting, they have to have a special meeting. It sounds like it's never been done before.
Thank you. Thank you.
So here's a dilemma that each one of the internal support facilities.
So here's a dilemma that each one of the internal support facilities committee members should understand, and I'm sure none of the county board members are aware of who are not on the committee. At our August meeting, we had on our agenda to start going over the budgets. Three of those budgets were continued until this meeting. It was the county board budget, the county board chairman budget, and the administration budget. Those budgets were continued until September because we were expecting to have a county board meeting that night to get input from people about what they thought should and shouldn't be in the budgets. Whether they supported staff being moved around, positions being created, positions being classified, positions being eliminated. That was the decision that was made at the August Wednesday Internal Support Facilities Committee meeting. Now, I was one of the people who showed up that Wednesday night for the county board meeting so that I would hear from other county board members their opinions. The meeting didn't happen, as you're all aware. Yesterday, at 12:30 at our Internal Support Facilities Committee meeting, which started at 8:15 in the morning, 12:30, we lost a quorum. We didn't get to the budget for the county administrator and county administration and county board. So the committee has not yet had the consensus to move the budget forward. Before the meeting adjourned yesterday, as we were about to lose our quorum, the decision was to wait until today to get the input of all of the county board members before we pass a budget that none of you are in favor of. You know, we don't want to be putting positions in that you don't want. We don't want to not be putting positions in that you want. So if the decision today is made to send it back to committee again, we don't know what your opinion is. And if you vote to send it back to committees today, you are not giving us your opinion. You are not representing the taxpayers. You are not doing your job by taking a position. You know, we don't have to like your opinion. We don't have to dislike it, but we need to hear it, and the public needs to hear it. And as many county board members have stated today, we need to move forward and do our jobs. And when you don't make a decision today, and you say, let someone else make that decision, you're not participating in the process, and you're not doing the job you were elected to do, and you're making our job more difficult. So I can't support sending this back to committees. Let's make the decision today, and then we know what to put in the budget. Now, we have already been told, our staff, our committee has been told that it doesn't matter if we approve budgets or not, staff is going to put their ideas into the budget. That's what we've been told twice. It's not how it works. Committees approve the budgets and forward them on. We would like to do that. That's our job. We don't want staff to get into trouble for doing things they're not supposed to do. So let's help staff out here, too, and let's not hold up that budget process for all the people involved in that, because it takes a lot of time, as those of us who have been around for a while understand. You just, I understand everybody has good intentions and everybody has good wishes, but sometimes you have to make a decision that's hard instead of letting someone else make it and not making the decision. Your opinion matters. We need to know it. We will move on with whatever it is, but it's really not fair to say, I'm not going to make a decision today, let's send it back to committees and let them deal with it because I don't want to. So we would really like to have that special meeting, approve the budgets, and move forward. So I can't support sending it back to three more meetings and then waiting till October and making Ralph wait until after October to get the budget numbers in there. That just makes no sense at all. I don't think that's fair. So I have to vote no.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman. I have to concur with Ms. Barnes. This whole kicking the can down the road, this is not what our county board has been comprised of in years past. We have been a board that has faced up to issues, and in this case, the amendments that are being put forth, perfectly acceptable amendments to support about three months ago. But now they're being put on the floor to provide some sort of compromise when in fact there is truly a rule of law. The fact that our country, our state sometimes, and our county for sure, is a governance of laws, not men and women. And so here we are, we're not following procedures, rules, et cetera. Why does that matter? Because those are the actionable parts of law, of what we run ourselves by so that we can be honest, open, and right with the community that we serve. So given those stipulations, as Ms. Barnes said, guys, you must vote today. The amendment is something that is warm and fuzzy, and it's attractive, but it's the wrong thing to do. We have to make our decision today whether we want to eliminate these positions or we don't. I also want to remind you that if you don't vote to eliminate these positions, then you are, in essence, saying that a position that was created May 2013 for a utility coordinator is acceptable for our administrative assistant that Mr. Franks has employed. And, oh, do I have that wrong? Okay, well, flip-flop. We have, we have a utility coordinator, yeah, that's right, that, that is doing PR work. And then we have a temporary project manager who is doing administrative work. I mean, am I against these roles being in place? Absolutely not. But the question today is, should we eliminate them? And then the next question is, how quickly can we review them and potentially give Mr. Franks the opportunity to justify them and put them in play? That's, that's really the way to do this. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mine is just a little more procedural, a little clarification as to whether we had a motion from Mr. Rang, and if there was a second?
There was not.
There was not a motion, or there was not a second?
There was no second. The only thing on the floor is Mr. Goddard Moller's amended amendment with your, but he agreed to your friends' amendment.
Okay, so there was no second. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Goddard Moller?
Now, I, I think you can't have it both ways. I, I don't have any problem with this going back to committees so the committees can review them. That's where the wheels fell off the cart in the first place, is the committees didn't have that opportunity. But I don't believe that we should be voting today and then send it back to committee. I, you can't, if we're going to vote today, don't send it back to committee, just vote. All right? But if you want the committees' input, which has been one of the things that has been criticized over and over this morning, you got to send it back to committee to get that input. And that would be the traditional way we do things, is that the committees would make a recommendation to this board, not the board making a recommendation to the committees. Guys, with that, I would call for a vote. Thank you.
There is, we're voting on the amendment to send this back to three committees, correct? And that's where we're at. So we will... No, there was no... No, I got, I got this down. So that's where we're at now, we're voting. We will do this electronically. So you'll be voting on the amendment to send this back to three committees. Remember? Please vote your switches.
It's your motion, and Mr. Smith?
Mr. Scala just called and indicated that I made a procedural error. I would like to explain. All right, oh, I'm sorry.
So what you're actually voting on is the motion that was made by Joe, which was to not eliminate the positions, but add the positions under the OCA codes that he had, you know, said, which is the chairman's budget. And also Larry's motion, which was to send it to the three committees for discussion. So that is the motion that we are theoretically voting on, just for clarification purposes for everybody. It was, no, it was Joe's amendment as amended. It was he accepted it. I think Mr. Curren's. Have all voted to wish?
No.
Okay.
It already has been. So I think we're just waiting for Mr. Heisler as the last one. So the vote was to amend the... Larry's and Joe's, because it wasn't Larry's, Joe's accepted it, and Joe's. Right. Of course. So Mr. Heisler's the last one. What we'll do, here we do it this way. Have all voted to wish, who have all voted to wish, have all voted to wish. The only one who hasn't voted is Mr. Heisler. Mr. Heisler, just how do you wish to vote?
No.
Okay. Clerk, please take the record. So Mr. Heisler should be added as a motion, should be sent. On a vote of thirteen to ten, the amendment carries, and this will go back to three committees, and it will be done as adding these positions, not getting rid of the positions.
Hating, yes. Barnes, no. Bates, yes. Christensen, yes. Goddard Moller, yes. Heisler, no. Young, no. Kearns, yes. Copsell, yes. Kurtz, no. McCann, yes. Noep, no. Rang, no. Reiner, yes. Scala, yes. Smith, yes. Spurrell, yes. Thorson, no. Lockup, no. Wheeler, no. Wilback, yes. Wilcox, no. Jensen, yes. Total thirteen yes and no.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Scala?
What reason do you seek corrections?
Well, so you're clear, that was just for the amendment. Do you still have a vote on the now amended resolution?
Correct. All right, so Mr. Scala isn't again, and we need to, the resolution now is modified to go forward. Okay. We'll call the vote again now, because this has been thoroughly debated. So at this time, members, please vote your switches. What happened? So basically, we're voting, I'm telling you what we're voting on. On the modified resolution, because the resolution was just modified, because we just adopted the amendment. Now, this will be to send it back to committees, and Mr. Smith? Well, we have, she's got to fix that. Okay, she can, got to fix that. Right. So it's a resolution, instead of eliminating, adopting. Mr. Willbeck?
Before we make a motion on it, can we put a specified date on there?
That wasn't part of the amendment. That wasn't part of the amendment.
Can we amend it now? We need to get our...
In an abundance of caution, we will have another one. I'm actually, the clerk doesn't think we necessarily need to, but we will now vote as the resolution has been amended. I will, I'm going to explain what it is. I'm going to explain where we are. We are, have an amended resolution that would send it back to three committees, and instead of having termination, would be creation. Is that correct, Mr. Goddard Moller? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Rang? Thank you. Now, I would like to make an amendment to have this resolution in front of our county board agenda. When's the normal meeting day for October? October 17th. So it'll go through all the committees at that time, and it'll be back in front of here to be decided October 17th on the regular county board agenda.
Mr. Reiner, second.
Mr. Reiner, second. Any discussion? Mr. Wilkott, do you want to discuss it?
Just acknowledge, Peter, that that's going to require a special meeting of some of those three committees.
I believe we don't have an HR committee before then, so that's correct. Thank you. Well, all of us in favor of the amended amendment, seeing that I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the chair and the ayes have it. The motion is being amended. Okay? We've got that. Now, see, no further discussion. Members, please vote your switches on the amended, on the amended resolution to send it back to three committees, create the positions instead of eliminating them, and having back, navigating it back here on the October seventeenth. Please vote your switches. Yours doesn't work. Yeah, we'll have you vote at the end, Jim. Yeah, originally, the amendment was voice vote. We're voting now, Mr. Gattamaller, Mr. Ryan. Do we have a button, Jim? All right, members, please vote your switches. Right, now we're voting on the amended resolution. Have all voted to wish? Oh, we haven't voted. You got it? Okay. Members, please vote your buttons. You can vote your buttons. Show your votes. Nobody's showing.
Oh, you've got the wrong resolution up there.
Yep.
You've got the wrong resolution up there, of course.
Yep.
Everything we did was efficient. Everything we did was efficient.
Did it pop up?
I'd order some pizza.
Okay.
If you were to get me, get a good sign. My mom would be mad.
Or if you're going to run out of tape, will they adopt it?
This is my own personal version. My ADHD is not let itself weigh into six hours.
All right, it work it? Let's push the buttons. Yes, and then we're voting now on the resolution. So I think we got it. I think it's coming. We're voting on pepperoni or sausage. Yvonne, yours hasn't shown up yet. Yeah, we got to just say, we got to say that three point. Yvonne, the reason it's showing up differently is because we moved all the participation of the frauds in Italy came three, and that's why this is four. Chris?
Yeah, what about?
Do you need to vote? Mr. Heisler, you have to. Donna, have Donna voted? Don, do you need to vote? Have all voted to wish? Have all voted to wish. Mr. Heisler, how do you wish to vote?
No.
Okay. Have all voted to wish. Clerk, will please take and go back.
It's not a way. It's not a way. You voted no.
You said early and often, Donna.
They have me up there.
Mr. Heisler voted no.
We're not going to, so we're in the middle of a vote. So Mr. Heisler, okay, so seventeen to six. On a vote of seventeen to six, the amended resolution carries and goes back to the three committees to add on to the employees. It will be back here October. Okay? Thank you. Wait a minute, I'm in October for the regulations. Okay, you want to read the names of the votes? Okay.
Abing, yes. Barnes, no. Bates, yes. Christensen, yes. Gattamaller, yes. Heisler, no. Young, yes. Kearns, yes. Copsel, yes. Kurtz, yes. McCann, yes. Nowick, yes. Green, no. Reiner, yes. Scala, yes. Smith, yes. Spurrell, yes. Thorson, no. Wachup, yes. Wheeler, no. Wilcox, yes. Wilcox, no. Jensen, yes. Seventeen yes, sixteen no.
Thank you. Six, seventeen to six. The next thing on our agenda? No, it's not, unfortunately. I'm looking through our agenda. See, agenda item number two, three point two, is the resolution to waive attorney-client privilege for state's attorneys.
I would ask that we move that this matter be continued to the Tuesday night meeting on part of the regular agenda, so that we can all get on with our lives today sometime.
I think, you know what, I think only a couple of are speaking on that.
There hasn't even been a resolution made yet.
Ms. Barnes? Yes, Ms. Barnes?
I don't know why my light keeps stopping.
All right, Mr. Wilcox?
Um, Joe, I would disagree, because I think now more than ever, these three state's attorney opinions need to be available to the public, so that we can have our special committee meeting, so we can get this back to the county board in October. That way, we don't have to listen to half the board opine on what they think they read or what they think they know. And in some cases, I've heard that many board members aren't even aware of these three opinions at this point. So we need to have the discussion and bring it forward.
There's no motion. One second. Mr. Gattamaller made a motion. Mr. Copsel seconds his motion to table this until Tuesday. Is there discussion on that? Well, here's your Wilcox. Are there discussions, Mr. Thorson?
I just want to chime in and just say that I'm absolutely ready to vote on this. I'd like to at least get something accomplished today. Thank you. This is something that I don't see any reason why. It, the time is of the, the time is of the essence, I'm sorry, time is of the essence to get it out there. As Colonel Wilcox pointed out, I don't see anything in there that I'm afraid to have a public review. So there's absolutely no reason why we can't get this done right now, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a pretty straightforward vote. I don't think there should be much discussion. This is a very transparent thing that needs to be out there, and I don't see why there should be not a vote right now. It's basically, pretty much being transparent to the public in things that nature. So I think that we can move forward with this vote fairly quickly. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I guess I disagree. I think this jeopardizes our opportunity to get confidential opinions from the state's attorney's office. I think this, this particular item is not difficult for me to understand. I don't have a problem with it being out there, but I hate to set the precedent that every time we ask the state's attorney for an opinion, that they have to think about whether we're going to release it to the public or not. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
I was going to agree with what Mike Grae just said, and also chime in on what Larry just commented on. And I asked the question before, are we setting a precedent here? And I was never given a definitive answer. Is there one available?
I'm not sure the state's attorney is willing to opine at this point, but Mr. Vind is here.
Can I have a point of order? We're supposed to only be discussing the proposed amendment, which is to table this, not the actual motion itself. So I would say this is out of order for him to opine on anything except for the amendment, which is to table it, which wouldn't have him opining on anything.
Well, I think you might say something. All right.
Yeah, there you go.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment to table this for Tuesday? If they're not seeing any more discussion on this, Chris, did you want to talk about that or about the underlying issue? Okay, so there's a motion to second to table. All of us in favor of tabling this for Tuesday, we sit it by by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Goodenchair, if the ayes have it, we'll have the push off. Thank you, Mr. Scala. Norm?
I think the question was, was there precedent on waiving the attorney-client privilege in releasing opinions? Is that, was that, is that the question?
Yeah, that's the question. Are we setting a precedent? Would we be waiving our attorney-client privilege in the future?
Not necessarily. You would certainly be waiving your attorney-client privilege to any opinion that you disclose now. Doesn't mean that you're waiving it in the future. It does create that, it creates precedent that the county board has waived the attorney-client privilege in the past, though. Each opinion, each opinion has attorney-client privilege attached to it. You could look at every opinion and decide whether you wanted to waive the attorney-client privilege on that, or whether you wanted to keep that attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Mr. Christian?
I just wanted to agree with, I think Larry or maybe Michelle. I, there's nothing in the state's attorney's ruling I don't understand, or I don't care if it's really released as far as if it's for transparency's sake. I will tell you, I do think it hurts the state's attorney's opinion in the future. We need their frank opinion in the future for all sorts of things for negotiation purposes. And that, I think that, again, if the state's attorney is going to start giving opinions that is now going to have to be written in well, that someday this is going to be released, I think that's a mistake. First, that's my personal opinion. Again, what I do for a living, you never waive that right of attorney private privilege. Again, it's not because there's anything in that ruling that bothers me. If it goes out, it goes out. It just, that's just the way I was trained, is you don't do that. So I'm not, I'm going to vote no, just simply because that is the way I was, I was taught. So, thank you.
As, as the chair knows, there's about four inches thick of paper in his desk of all the attorney, all the state's attorney's opinions that goes back, well, at least to several years before I was chair. I don't have a problem with releasing all of them, to be honest with you. And I'm not sure how we got in the position that the state's attorney's opinions to us were not public information. So I don't have a problem with releasing them. I just think we ought to review law at some point in time and say, is this time to release this?
I think, Joe, you make a good point. But also to understand that the state's attorney's opinion is just an opinion. There's no binding effect whatsoever. It's one lawyer having an opinion, and there could be five other opinions by five other lawyers. There's no binding effect. We have to be clear on that, number one. The other thing, if we're going to be transparent, we can put them all up on the, on the web if we'd like, every one of them, which may be something of proposal going forward. I do concern, I'm concerned, though, would it have a chilling effect on this, on the state's attorney? And moreover, if we do this piecemeal and only allow for one now, and so if somebody asks in the future and we say no, the public's going to say, what are you hiding? And they'd be right to ask that. So this is a big policy question, which way you want to go. Mr. Curran?
I only have one question on the state's attorney's opinion. You guys been throwing lawsuit of today, number lawsuits, if we release it, does it jeopardize the state's attorney from defending us?
I don't know. They could have a conflict anyway. I'm not sure he's ready to answer the question that's thrown at us at this time. But go ahead if you'd like, Mr. Ryan.
Really, three, three, three things. I never recommend waiving the privilege. I just don't. Mr. Frank talks about it's one lawyer's opinion. That's true. We're your lawyers. You can take our advice or not take our advice. When we issue opinions, rarely are opinions saying, hey, this is going to be illegal. And we can't let you do something illegal, but we can say, hey, this is what we think the right way to go, the wrong way to go. And it's up to you to take our opinion or not, completely under your purview. And there are times that you, you and other departments and committees take our opinions and take our advice, and they don't. And that's up to you. You don't have to follow. As far as opining on whether we would be the subject of litigation, you know, people can sue you because they don't like the shirts you're wearing. That's, that's just the fact of life. So you can take that for what it's worth.
Yeah, so we'd heard that there were some people that felt they were told this would influence the opinions in the future. So Norm, I think you're ready to give Mr. Kenealy's direct quote, but I'll preface it for you, which I talked to Patrick about that. And as long as this is not setting the precedent, and those that are requesting this are not looking to do it for a real attorney opinion, Mr. Keneley did not feel this would hamper the opinions they give in the future. If we were to follow what Mr. Gattamaller said and make them all public, that would have an influence on their opinions in the future. And I'll let Norm decide if that was appropriately paraphrased for Mr. Keneley's behalf.
Honestly, I'm not sure if that is appropriately paraphrased, paraphrased or not. It's probably consistent with our opinion that it wouldn't necessarily waive anything down the road. Again, I, I never recommend waiving the privilege. That's... That's my opinion. I certainly wouldn't want to waive the attorney-client privilege on every opinion, because I absolutely think that it would, it may make us much more cautious in giving you very forthright, direct advice and telling you, hey, maybe saying, hey, this is, these are all the bad things that I could have, that could happen. Because then if that opinion gets out there, if there's a lawsuit filed, all those bad things are, counts one, two, three, four, five.
Ms. Barnes?
The elementary grade school teachers talk about staying on task, and I would like to stay on task with this item. The, the comments and the questions that are coming up really have nothing to do with this resolution. The resolution is specific to three opinions only, and, and none of us can predict what anyone's going to do in the future. I just think it's a leap to start saying, "What if, what if, what if, what if the sky falls down?" We've heard way too much of that today, and, and I think it's off-topic, as they say. So I'll be supporting this. I think there is nothing that is honestly proprietary in it whatsoever. I think it's transparent. I think, and because there are people who think it's important, there are members of the public who want to know what it is, there's nothing in there that's secretive. I, I truly believe that it's appropriate to release it, and, and I'll just say that releasing this today doesn't mean that I would ever vote to do it for any others in the future. It all depend on the content and the reason. So again, let's not start making generalizations about the consequences of our actions that aren't logical. Thank you.
I just think we'd be hard-pressed to ever turn anybody down in the future.
Not me, I can vote yes or no any day.
I think they'd be able to get it, though, with that. Jeff?
Well, I just, I just think that you're, when you speak it like that in general, you're, you're introducing a whole bunch of opaqueness into government, because everything could be covered under the, the cloth of attorney-client privilege, and, and information would not get out to the public. And don't forget the public, although they do represent this county board, we represent the public, so it is their opinion as well, even though they're not entitled to it, unless we specifically give it, which we are doing here, and by virtue of this procedure, which is not an easy procedure to have even three of them released, that everybody that has read them, seems to believe they're somewhat innocuous, demonstrates that these are very difficult to have, or should be very difficult to, to have released, and I'm, I'm not afraid of that precedent, but I'm not an attorney.
There it is.
Well, a number of years ago, probably five or six years ago, the, we got an opinion from the state's attorney on a situation that actually involved the umbrage, the pipeline. And everybody seemed to know it before I read my email, and I think the public. So I wonder when suddenly we got so concerned about a client, attorney-client privilege? Because once somebody asks a board member a question and they answer it, it's out there. Actually, once it gets directed, in that case, it was to Chairman Kaler, and then distributed to us, it was, it had already gone past confidentiality. So, you know, I, this seems superfluous, this just has been pointless to me at this point, to, to have to say release. I mean, it's, it's out there.
Thank you. Okay. But we don't have a motion or a second on this. Oh, there we, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's just send a gap to the county board.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Let's move this to the... There's a motion to pass, and Mr. Ryan, second. That was it? Any further discussion? Okay. Then, the question is whether the resolution to waive attorney-client privilege shall pass. Please vote your switches.
Getting hungry.
I can't. I'm good at it.
Have all voted to wish. Ms. Curtis, how do you vote? She votes yes. And Mr. Heiser, how do you vote?
Yes.
The clerk will please take the record. Okay, I voted, I'm voting yes, 13 voting on this resolution fails. Thanks. Made by Mr. Goddard, so if this call holds in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? If any in the chair and the ayes have it, it will not be pushed off.